Short break after the Finance Committee meeting and then the mayor will convene the City Council meeting. So, welcome. Would the Director please call the roll?
Certainly. Mayor Pena Leon.
Here.
Chairman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Goshkarian.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Very good. The first item is the consideration of minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on last November 12th, 2019, quite a long time ago. Any questions, comments? Can I have a motion to...
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's passed. The second item on our agenda is going to be presented by Director Hala. It's going to be a consideration of the new water rates. This is a complicated subject and I know that she's going to try and break it down for us into somewhat more understandable components. But we're looking forward to a healthy discussion about this because it's an interesting situation with falling consumption. So, Director?
Good evening. Thank you Chairman. Good evening Finance Committee members. This is a follow-up to a brief conversation that we had about water rates as part of the November 12th Finance Committee meeting on the budget for FY '21. A little bit of a deeper dive on proposed water rates for FY '21 budget. So, to give you a little bit of background on the water rate methodology, the city's water and sanitary sewer operation is categorized as an enterprise fund. The significance of that designation is that as an enterprise fund, its operations should be fully self-supporting. It receives no transfers from the general fund. It receives no tax levy proceeds. So, the rates charged for water and sanitary sewer need to be sufficient to fund operating costs, debt, service, and capital, so all related costs for both water and sanitary sewer. We use a rolling five-year consumption to do that for budget forecasting. This takes out deviations related to weather from year to year. A hot, dry summer will drive consumption up. A cooler, wet summer will drive consumption down and we see a lot of variability from year to year. So, that rolling five-year average helps us mitigate any significant rate changes from year to year. We use a blended rate for the water and sanitary sewer. There's a fixed charge that is assessed quarterly based on the water meter size and we have a variable charge that is assessed on consumption. We bill based on thousand gallons, so each thousand gallon unit is charged a specific rate. The City Council currently has a desire to maintain a ratio of 20% fixed and 80% variable for the overall revenue sourcing and we'll talk a little bit more about that methodology on a later slide. A few years ago, we implemented a tiered rate structure for residential. Did I lose my mic? Can you still hear me? Okay. So, residential consumption is tiered. There are currently three tiers. So, any consumption up to 10,000 gallons in a quarter is assessed one rate. Consumption from the 11,000 gallon up to 60 is charged a different rate and consumption in the quarter over 60,000 gallons is assessed a different rate. And we use long-term forecasting similar to other funds for budgetary purposes and the long-term forecast for the water fund sets out a 2.5% increase in annual revenue to cover anticipated inflationary costs largely driven by personnel in the utility fund. Any questions on the methodology? So, one concept that is challenging water utilities across the nation is that generally water consumption is declining. Now, specifically weather-driven based on the summer, we're currently projecting in the current fiscal year '20 to come in $650,000 under budget based on that five-year rolling average because we're seeing lower consumption this year than we've actually seen in the last few years. The chart on the right, on the left, shows annual consumption by fiscal year. So, you can see that our current forecast for FY '20 is lower than the last three years and then you can generally see a declining trend. This anomaly here was the last very hot, dry summer we had, which was 2012 and in that fiscal year '13, we saw the highest consumption we've ever had for a fiscal year. On the right, just for additional purposes, I also wanted to identify that largely the residential tiers were driven by water consumption in the summer. This chart shows a 10-year water consumption average by month and so what you can see is that we see significant increases in the summer months for water consumption, which taxes the plant and generated the need for a higher-volume water plant to address those summer needs. So, we tend to see flat usage in the winter months, which means that now in January, we can pretty easily forecast our annual revenue because we don't see much differentiation in the January to April months, which means that $650,000 estimate probably will remain Similarly, we have a chart on the left here that shows the rolling five-year average. So, this is the rolling five-year average consumption on which we've based our water rates in each of the last seven fiscal years. And you can see that that rolling five-year average is also going down year to year. Just to provide some additional color, you know, this is, like I said, a national trend. This is not specific to Lake Forest or the part of the country. We have more educated users being more conservative with their water consumption and we also see changes in toilets, showers, different plumbing fixtures that are intended to conserve water consumption. So, that is all in play. What does that mean for the city and the water rates? Is that declining consumption is going to drive up water rates in order to generate the needed revenue to operate. So, a 2.5% increase in revenue is going to require a 3.5% to 4% rate adjustment overall because of the declining consumption. So, we look to the fixed versus variable fee structure. We have had rate structure discussions, significant discussions, and they started in 2013, calendar 2013, when the Public Works Committee, Finance Committee, and City Council all looked at structural changes to water rates that were imposed in fiscal year '15. And then additional analysis began in calendar year '16 that resulted in additional structural changes in FY '18. So, those two years are noted as specific changes in the water rate methodology to move our revenue from more variable towards more fixed. So, you can see that we started out in FY '13, 91% variable and 9% fixed. Those structural changes have been intended to increase the fixed rate component of the rate structure because that is fixed water revenue that will not change with consumption. Now, the interesting thing to note is that about 90% of the expenses in the fund are fixed and so we really initially started out with an inverse, but we recognize that 90% at a fixed rate is not reasonable because it isn't going to drive consumer usage. So, they need that variable component to the rate to conserve water. So, the right side are the four major considerations that we look to on a water rate structure and how they can be addressed, be it with a variable rate or a fixed rate. So, if we want to increase revenue stability and minimize weather fluctuations during the year, then we move to a greater proportion of fixed. If we want to promote water consumption, then we move towards a greater percentage on variable. Equity, general literature on water rate methodology says that the average consumer sees a variable rate as more equitable than a fixed because they're paying for what they used. And then cost recovery can easily be addressed with either depending on what priorities a particular governing board has for that water rate structure. So, as I mentioned, today we sit at about 2080, 20% fixed, 80% variable in our rate So, moving to November 12th, so we brought to you a brief presentation with some of this information included in your PowerPoint that evening. The staff recommendation was to begin to move towards a 2575 and to further move towards further increasing the fixed component of the rate structure, but to also consider elimination of sprinkler-free Mondays. So, that was imposed a few years ago before the plant improvements were complete. Those are complete now, so it's anticipated that the Public Works Committee that I think is their next meeting will be discussing that particular recommendation and have a recommendation coming back to City Council before the summer. Based on the direction, the committee asked for a few more pieces of additional information. One was how we might phase in the structural change from 20% to 25% fixed, provide additional ways to mitigate a disproportionate effect on low-usage consumers. We talked about the fact that a fixed rate adjustment will result in a higher overall rate increase to lower-usage consumers because they have less usage to spread that fixed rate adjustment over. So, how could we mitigate that impact and provide some statistic regarding consumer usage in the different categories? So, those are the pieces of information we're hopefully going to answer for you this evening. So, the next slide, this was a chart, what's inside the box was an analysis that we did in calendar year '13 and '14 as we were embarking on the conversation about the initial rate structure change. And we compared the 12 months ended September of 2012, which was a very hot, dry summer, to the 12 months ended September 2013, which was a cool, wet summer. And then we showed the consumption, this is gallons consumed for the year. So, this was annual consumption in different categories and what percentage of the whole they represented in those different categories so that we could begin to identify how much consumption changes based on summer weather conditions. And so, when we looked at this, this is how we ended up, this 240. If you think about the 60,000 gallon metric for the highest-tier rate for residential, that was driven by this analysis because 60 per quarter over the year was 240. And so, we were trying to influence users in these lower ranges and at the time, sort of charge these higher-usage consumers a premium, if you will. And so, as part of that analysis, effective made one of 14, we created the first tiered rate structure on the variable for residential and there were two tiers. So, it was just 0 to 60 and 60 and over. And we created those two tiers and then when we came back three years later, we used additional analysis and again wanted to increase the fixed proportion of the revenue and so we created a third tier. And so, now this is what we have now as of May 1, '17, a three-tiered residential rate So, history of water rates, I'm not going to go through this, but what this slide does provide is a history of all the water-related rates over time, FY '13 through current. And in the second column, this tells you the number of accounts that fall into the different categories. So, the top look at the fixed rates, which we separate into three components, small, medium, or large. And you can see that the overwhelming majority of the counts fall in the small and are assessed the smallest fixed rate per quarter. And then we have about 300 in the medium and we have very few large meters, which are six or eight-inch meters, that are assessed the large quarterly fixed fee. And then the variable rate, we have three tiers to the residential consumption and you can see the number of accounts that fall in this on average over the course of a year. So, there are a lot of consumers who will fall under 63/4 and exceed 61/4, which is largely driven just by their summer irrigation. But on average, you can see that most residential and most accounts in general fall in that residential 10 to 60 tier. The all other, when we had the discussions in both '13 and '16, we found that generally from our consumption analysis, other types of consumers, non-residential, so commercial, multifamily, school, churches, those type of accounts tended to have less fluctuation in the summer. So, the decision was to just maintain their variable rate at the same rate for all consumption so they do not have a tiered rate structure. And then you can see again in red FY '15 and FY '18 being the two years in which structural changes to the rates were made. So, what we have on this slide are three options for consideration. Option two was the option that you looked at on November 12th, but just to give you a point of reference. So, we have these accounts, number of accounts listed again from the previous slide, the current rates for each rate assessed. Option one is an across-the-board adjustment and that is what we have done on the previous slide in all the years that were not highlighted in red. So, we have just done across-the-board adjustments on both fixed and variable. They've all been similar in percentage and we have tended towards increasing the difference between the second and third tier in residential. So, you'll see that those don't match as far as a number of cent or percent. This option would keep you at 2080 from a fixed variable component aspect and will generate, because again, we're trying to generate 2.5%, which is basically about $175,000. And so, that will generate the 2.5%. Option two is more dramatic on the fixed side and it moves us to 25 fixed, 75% variable, still generates the same amount of revenue, but does so by putting the higher increases on the fixed rates than in the variable rates. What we've done here is actually have a negative, actually a reduction in the variable rate for Tier 1 and Tier 2 residential in an effort to mitigate the impact on lower-volume consumers of the fixed rate adjustment. Option three is essentially the middle of option one and two, gets you to about 22.5 and 77.5, still generates the same 2.5%. Still has the reduction in the first tier to mitigate what in this option would be a smaller increase. So, you're looking at 43 to 45, 55, or 50 per quarter and this reduction will mitigate some of that impact. The next slide has similar information on the top, but what you have added here to the bottom is projected annual impact on each category of consumer. So, this will provide in dollars and as a percentage, the projected annual impact. So, these dollars are over the course of the year, not quarterly, not monthly, this is annual. So, a low-usage residential, that's going to be about 1,500 of the 7,000 accounts, would under option one see a $19 per year increase, 46 in option two, $37 in option three. Then we provided the same information for medium-usage residential, high-usage residential. And then here in your packet, the only commercial I provided you was a high-usage and a couple people noted that that was impacting the percentage adjustment. So, I broke this out into two. A high-usage commercial, they are paying very high water bills every quarter and so you can see what their percentage impact is. But here on this last line that I've added, which was not in your packet, is the average usage of a commercial category is about 900 units per year. And so, their dollar impact and percentage impact is provided, which was not in your packet. So, it gets closer to the residential percentage changes that you see. So, based on conversation and input received today from the Finance Committee, then we would bring back a first reading and final reading at the two meetings in February of City Council with a fee schedule change reflecting the fee adjustments based on the option the committee prefers. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the committee? It's a complicated subject with lots of numbers and different ways of looking at things. So, Alderman Moreno?
So, over the years, one of the biggest issues that I remember hearing was fairness. And you certainly addressed it in talking about the low-usage customer, consumer. And it still rings in my mind that we want to think about people, especially those on fixed incomes, that have to pay their fair share certainly, but don't have an income that's changing. So, they're limited by this. And on a single-year perspective, it's not that big a deal, but if you're here for 20 more years, it does add up. So, that's one aspect that I think is very important to bring forth in this. The other aspect is certainly the declining trend, which again, you addressed very well. We've also at Public Works talked about, and I believe at City Council as well, talked about other communities that might benefit from our investment in our infrastructure. And we're not addressing that here and shouldn't. We need to manage our own finances regardless of what might occur in the future. But I come back to that question of fairness because I do think about those older, primarily older residents who are on fixed incomes. And from that perspective, option one is a very attractive option. That's the 80/20 and that's certainly easier for them to manage. But I also do like the idea of a phase-in to something different because I think it's important for us to manage our finances properly. So, I would just share that comment with Council. Those are things that keep kind of alarming me, alarming in my mind that need to pay attention to these things. Not that I have conclusions and I'm certainly open, but I love a phase-in because it addresses a lot of issues as we move forward.
Your points are well-taken, Alderman Moreno, and I think that's largely driven some of the difficulty in the rate conversation with 90% of your expenses fixed regardless of consumption and yet only 20% of your revenue is assured. And that difference, and you know, should all consumers bear the fixed cost because they all have water brought to their faucets or should it, you know, largely be driven based on ability to pay?
One more question, Alderman Rumel?
Alderman Morris and Director Hala and I had a conversation this morning where I brought up a lot of the points that Alderman Moreno just expressed. I too have a concern about people on a fixed income and it seems to me that this bill comes out and we also have the police and fire pension fee on that. And so, that bill is getting larger and larger and that concerns me. And then we even talked about, is it more equitable to put some of, maybe not these water expenses, but, and that's another conversation, but perhaps particularly that pension fee back into the general tax levy where it's apportioned differently. It's part of our real estate tax bill. Now, whether you think real estate taxes are fairly apportioned or not is another question, but at least it's one way that we kind of measure ability to pay, right? And so, that was the same concern that I expressed. Plus, I think that whenever you charge a tax or a fee, there is often a social policy that goes along with that. And so, I think we want to, and again, I don't have a particular solution here, but what's the message that we want to send to our residents in terms of water consumption? And I think that what we charge them for water is a good indication of whether we want them to conserve or, you know, go ahead and spend. This is a little bit different because we also have fixed costs to cover and consider. So, I just throw those thoughts out that we were sharing today for, you know, the benefit of everybody to maybe consider.
Yeah, I think we could all agree that we are sensitive to these issues, but we also face a $650 budget deficit and we have fiscal responsibility to maintain this enterprise fund. And so, I don't want to pay more and I don't think, I think we want to send the right message, but I also think we need to be fiscally responsible stewards here and the fixed costs at 90% are the fixed cost at 90%. And so, we have to have a little bit of a hybrid. So, it seems like staying the status quo flies in the face of some key facts here and I think we just have to have some flexibility to balance these things. And it seems like option three is a phased approach is a good median, so I would be in support of that one.
There's one other point. If I could ask you to go back to the water revenue analysis where you looked at 2012, 2013, and 2019? And it's not, you were, it's the one with that box. That's it. So, it's hard to actually put these into the same buckets that we have for water rates, but nonetheless, I mean, if you look at the numbers on the 1 to 49 row, 1285 goes to 1502, goes to 2135, which is a pretty steady increase over time. And then as you look down the row, you see that those other categories actually either grow at a slower rate and at the very bottom, they actually decline pretty significantly. So, I think there's a message here as well in the numbers that the categories at the low end are growing faster than the categories at the high end of usage, of consumption. So, if we want to cover our costs, we have to focus on where the revenue potential resides, which is at the low end. However, we want to balance that out. So, we're back to that policy question, but I think paying attention to the numbers in these categories is important because you can raise rates at the high end and if your variable component is where you think you're going to make it up, you're not. So, it's important to pay attention to the numbers in those categories besides the percentages.
Yeah, I don't profess to have the answer to it, but if you go back two slides from where you have this slide where you talk about the considerations and we talked about, you know, the fixed component recognizes the importance of the fixed costs we have for the water fund. But you do have these two other considerations, promote water conservation. And I think at our council meeting, we're going to be talking about environmental sustainability. And so, you do have that factor that, you know, there is a good thing. Now, it doesn't help our enterprise fund getting the cost, but I think if you balance it out, we have to recognize our environmental responsibilities here and also the consumer perception here to pay for what I'm getting for it. And, you know, and they all will result in a cost recovery, you know, it's more number crunching, you know, if we stay at the 80/20, more number crunching to see what next year we need to do to cover. And certainly, Alderman Preschlack, you're right, our responsibility to cover, you know, the costs that we have for this fund. But I'd be concerned about moving too fast, too quickly, too far from the 80/20 because I think these considerations are very important in looking at the question.
Very good. What I'd like to do, and maybe I'll start with Alderman Bushman and we'll work our way around the Diaz to give the Director some sense of where you would like to see, but she has... But she has to come back at our session at the next time with a proposal that we could implement.
As I mentioned, you know, if you're talking about the 80/20, where we go from there, certainly I could live with the 80/20. I could also live with a modest increase. I don't think we need to go to the 22 and a half, 77 and a half. But whether we take it up a percentage or maybe percentage and a half, but, you know, I could live with that too, but that's where I would come out.
Very good. Alderman Moreno?
Option three.
Option three.
I would echo Alderman Preschelak's thoughts. You know, option three to me seems to be the most appropriate.
Very good.
I mean, if we stay at 80/20 and we raise prices on the variable where the bulk of the usage is, people are going to use less. And that's how pricing works, right? You raise the price, people use less of it. I kind of look at this as our pension obligations. I mean, they are what they are, and these fixed costs are real, and we're under an enterprise budget deficit. It's on us to communicate to the public about this structural issue and not just take the easy way out and keep it 80/20 because that's just not, that's not our, that's our responsibility to make the tough decisions, to educate people on the issues. And having 90% fixed cost and staying at 80/20 just doesn't seem reasonable, just given where we are. So I'm in favor of option three, and I think we need to educate the public on this. It's super complex even for us, and we're steeped in it. And let's just think about a way to keep it simple and to communicate these issues with them because it's a structural issue based on our cost base.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment?
Maybe I'll hold my fire for a moment.
Alderman notes?
Option three.
Option three.
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 And I agree, three. So there you go.
And I don't have to say anything.
There's no tie to break.
Nope.
Work for you? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone. The next item is regarding a security assessment. As we've talked about before, I and certainly Director Hala and the city manager get nervous when you read in the newspaper how many cities and communities have been hacked and are paying Bitcoins off to somebody in God knows where. So we've initiated a follow-up IT security assessment, and Director Bonsky is here to tell us what happened.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Finance Committee. Yes, on October 7th, City Council approved the engagement with Sentinel Technologies, a security assessment firm to perform the city's data security assessment. Over the month of November, they tested city's data networks, data systems, and then concluded their findings on December 3rd. To note, they had stated that the city fared much higher than average as compared to their other engagements. What they had tested and assessed were multiple areas in the city's infrastructure, the perimeter network, firewalls, servers, systems, and endpoints as well. They spent a particular emphasis on newly implemented systems put in production to highlight the new ERP system that recently came in. And what they had found with ERP or disaster, newly implemented disaster recovery system, they found no critical vulnerabilities on that, nothing further to note in their report. Overall, comparatively to the assessment that was completed in 2017, overall, we saw about a 72% reduction in vulnerabilities found. We staff attest to that significant reduction in the supplemental patching systems that we've put into place, as well as other minor systems, policies, and procedures that we put in as a result of 2017. So as of, we received the information on December 3rd, December 6th, we mitigated all critical vulnerabilities moving forward with lessons learned. So moving forward with that, you know, this is all great information, but as part of the security initiatives that we were doing this year, which the security assessment was a part of, we are implementing an ongoing vulnerability assessment service through CIS, the Center for Internet Security. What this allows us to do is we get some very valuable information from these assessments. And moving forward with something like CIS, it allows us to give us that additional visibility regularly as opposed to at a point in time. In addition, with CIS, what they do give us is they have a support structure in place, 24 by 7 security assessment center. So that gives us an additional bench strength in assessments and incident response as well. So additionally, part of the initiatives that we have going on, multi-factor authentication, we're continuing on our phased approach into multi-factor authentication, phase one being earlier this fiscal year. We move forward with phase two, increasing the usage of that. And also, one of the most significant initiatives that we have is our cybersecurity awareness training for all staff, all members with, all members with a city account. For staff, it's mandatory. At the end of this meeting, all of you will be receiving an email to participate. By all means, it's encouraged. And I think that's it. I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions, maybe Director Hala. One of the things that came up in our bond offering and the evaluation was the fact that we were doing this, which worked in our favor in the evaluation. But maybe you want to comment?
Yeah, that was an interesting question that previously hadn't really been addressed as part of the rating reviews, but they were very interested in hearing what their rated communities are doing to prevent cyber attacks, ransomware incidences, maintaining awareness throughout the employee population of the need to scrutinize emails from unexpected sources and those kind of things. And yes, so the security assessment and the ongoing awareness training were both noted positively by Moody's.
Questions? Alderman notes?
Certainly relieved to hear in terms of critical incidents that all those that were identified in the last review were identified. Are we doing this assessment continuously so that we're staying ahead of new critical incidents coming up?
Yeah, moving forward, that's what that CIS service is going to give the city. Is that consistent, ongoing? Yeah, it's going to evaluate current trends and let us know if any vulnerabilities are found that would not be addressed in the patch management systems that we have in place. So that going forward, yes, gives us that increased visibility and knowledge.
Very good. Questions? All right. Thanks very much.
Can I make a quick comment?
Please do.
First of all, going from whatever it was, 80-something vulnerabilities to 17 in two years is impressive. So thank you for that and, you know, making that, those great strides. I also wanted to bring in something slightly unrelated, which I believe at our last city council meeting, we were just about to price our bond issue. The auction was going off about the next day or the day after. We were, we knew that we had been reaffirmed in our AAA bond rating with some very positive comments, which we talked about at the time with respect to cybersecurity, with respect to our handling of our pension obligations, and also with respect to the reserves that we have maintained and built. And that were, those were significant factors in reaffirming our AAA bond rating. The bond rating of our neighboring communities, numerous of them have lost their AAA bond ratings, and many of them who have retained their AAA bond ratings are on negative watch. We are, if there was such a thing as positive watch, we'd be on it. So we are being well rewarded. The bond issue went off, $17 million of bonds were refinanced, and they went off at an interest rate of 1.77%, which is going to save, over the life of these bonds, it'll save the city and the taxpayers approximately $1.3 million. So this matters. This matters. Reserves matter. Dealing with pensions matter, and it ends up saving us money. So I just wanted to, we never had a chance to close the loop in terms of what we actually achieved in that bond offering, and it was fabulous. And we also, I think Elizabeth deserves credit for ticking the market. She missed it by one day, or it would have been another seven basis points we could have saved. But pretty much nailed a low point. And since then, since then, rates have gone up, not dramatically, but noticeably. So I thought that was a fitting subject for a finance committee meeting.
Alderman, you got your turn?
You know, through the chair. Thank you. As I look at this, and I certainly echo the mayor's thoughts, can you walk through the unlikely eventuality that there is a breach? Then what? I'd like to know essentially, you know, if something does happen, and there are no guarantees in life, but what were to happen if our system was held hostage? What procedures do we have in place? And again, whose concerns is it, and what type of liability do we as an entity?
Just from my perspective, and I'll answer in a minute, but I think the most likely one is ransomware. We could get hacked, but we don't have a lot of credit card information stored in our systems, so there's not a chance of our community's financial information getting out. But ransomware, where someone opens an email, clicks on the link, and that's all encrypted, and we have to do the Bitcoin thing. So I'll let you respond to ransomware and...
Sure. So overall, without getting into specifics in security, I think one of the most valuable things that we have in regards to that is the city's cyber security incident response plan. We have a well-exercised plan, and it's broken out by severity, by all means. Yes, we do hold some personally identifiable information. You're right, we mitigate that to wherever possible. And we have an incident response plan in place should an incident occur, but we also have multiple levels of backup disaster recovery, which helps support that area. We have multiple layers of security, which I won't go into now, but I'd be happy to talk about that in great detail in that regard.
And maybe that's a discussion for another time, and certainly the public should be made aware of it, but I'd love to learn a little bit more.
Just to add to that response, talking on the liability side, so the city is a member of the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency. Through that, as a consortium, we purchase general liability, workers' compensation, auto liability, those types of insurance coverages. A few years ago, Irma recognized the growing need for coverage related to cyber incidents, and for the first couple of years, they offered it as an optional additional coverage, which the city did purchase. This year, they have found that it, the executive board has deemed it so important, it's now part of the blanket coverage. So all Irma members have that specific cybersecurity coverage that helps in mitigation, helps with notification, helps with any legal issues that we would run into should there be an incident. So I think that's great news. In addition, our credit card processor for most of our functions, including our ERP, also provides breach coverage assistance in the event credit card data is somehow deemed.
And given our high level of defense, is there any recognition in terms of that insurance, in terms of we're a community that's being very proactive about it versus possibly some of our sister communities? Is there any?
So it was very interesting. I think Joe and I both found it interesting that when they added it as a blanket coverage, the insurance provider required all members to complete a questionnaire. And so Joe and I received the questionnaire, it was actually quite basic. So it really didn't ask in depth what all you were doing as an organization to prevent those or to mitigate them if they happened. I think I shared Joe's feeling that the questionnaire was quite basic considering the liability they're taking on and the coverage they're providing, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thank you. The last item on our agenda are other business. There are four items that were listed. The tax levy abatement ordinances, the flash report from December 29, 2019, core and elective service analysis, the FY '21 budget item, and the draft information technology capital improvement program. Any questions about any of those or discussion points? If not, thank you. Turn to the audience. Any, anyone in the audience have a question for the Finance Committee we'd like to entertain? Don't see any. So at this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, nay? We are adjourned. Well, we will restart in five minutes?
Seven.
Seven minutes. Seven minutes.
Seven, 7:25.
Back in your chairs. Thank you very much, everyone.
Well done. Thanks, Sid. Okay.
Welcome to the Tuesday, January 21st, 2020 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Rumel?
Here.
Alderman Preschlack?
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is reports of city officers. First is comments by the mayor, which is me. The first item on our agenda tonight is a resolution of sympathy for former Mayor Charles F. Clark Jr. I'll read the resolution. Whereas on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, the city council expresses its profound sadness at the passing of Charles F. Clark Jr., Charlie, on January 1st, 2020. And whereas Charlie Clark was a loyal and longtime friend to many and a valued member of our community; and whereas Charlie Clark was a graduate of Brown University and selflessly served our country in the Korean War before returning home to an impressive career in real estate; and whereas Charlie Clark served as mayor of Lake Forest from 1990 to 1993, and under his leadership, the city's first tax increment finance district was established, supporting redevelopment of the Waukegan and Everett Road area and construction of the Telegraph Road Train Station and Fire Station; the city's first recycling program was implemented, and a ban on leaf burning was instituted, in addition to many other initiatives that continue today to contribute to the special character of Lake Forest. And whereas Charlie Clark admirably carried on his family's tradition of civic involvement, his father, Charles F. Clark Sr., served as mayor of the city of Lake Forest from 1943 to 1946. Whereas prior to being elected mayor, Charlie Clark served on the city's plant commission, zoning board of appeals, and the Lake Forest Caucus. And whereas Charlie Clark, in addition to serving the city in appointed and elected positions, devoted time and service to various other boards and institutions, including the Onwensia Club, Catholic Charities, Bara College, and Lake Forest Hospital. And whereas Charlie Clark's most important roles in life were as a devoted and beloved husband to Eleanor, loving father of Charles F. Clark III, Timothy S. Clark and J.A. Clark, adoring grandfather to Arlo, Darby, Chase, Haley, and Ben Clark, and Liam and Cora Bradley, brother to Louise Clark Huff, and he was cherished by many nieces, nephews, and cousins. And whereas Charlie Clark was gracious, genuine, enthusiastic, and kind, and deeply loved his family, community, and fellow residents. And whereas Charlie Clark's contributions to Lake Forest were significant, he made a difference, and he will truly be missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Forest, in session on January 21st, 2020, hereby expresses its sincere sympathy to the members of the Clark family; and be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the Clark family with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the January 21st, 2020 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. I had the pleasure of serving immediately after Charlie left his role as mayor. But he was definitely a force and continued to be a force in the community in many ways after his term as mayor, and certainly accomplished a great deal. So, he was also a delightful guy to have dinner with. So, I understand some members of the family may want to make a short comment?
Evening. Our family speaks with great gratitude for the honor you've dispensed on my husband, Charles. And our children, Timothy, who's here this evening, and Charlie, and Jennifer. Charlie unfortunately had to go to Dallas today to do some family business. And Jay is not well, so they are so sorry they can't be here for this. Our children learned a great deal of the importance of service through this service of his father in many capacities, but mostly as mayor, which was a major honor. We share, they share with me pride of Charlie's dedication and of serving as mayor of his beloved Lake Forest. He often spoke with many people the advantages of living among the gifts provided to the citizens of Lake Forest. And he'd talk to anybody who would listen to him. And I remember when we were getting married, I said, "Why don't we live in the city?" And he said, "Oh, no, 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 we're going to live in Lake Forest." And I said, "Well, I'd really like to be in the city before we have children." "No, I want to live in Lake Forest, and I know you'll love it, dear. I just know you'll love it." I said, "Well, I'm sure I will." And we moved into a little house on Greenwood Avenue off south of Green Bay Road, had our four children there. And I grew to understand his great enthusiasm for our community. And he hoped that others felt as strongly as he did. And our children are so proud of him for what he accomplished in his life. And it's been so gratifying since he died to receive the beautiful letters about him. And I think I'd like to share that they were all about his kindness, his genuine feeling about people, his humility. And I think that that's what's shown through in his entire life, and his will to serve. He wanted to serve and give back, and that was his best wishes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda...
Do we approve the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to approve the resolution.
I would make the motion to approve the resolution. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I apologize for that little faux pas. Next item is a resolution recognizing the Chicago Bears' 100th season. And I'm pleased to read the following resolution congratulating the Chicago Bears on their 100th anniversary. "We're proud of the city's association with the Bears over the past four and a half decades. And with the recent announcement that the Bears will be holding training camp in Lake Forest, we are excited for the future." Brian McCaskey is here this evening to accept the resolution. Brian is vice president of the Chicago Bears, one of eleven children of Ed and Virginia McCaskey, and a grandson of Bears founder George Halas. After I read the resolution, I'll ask Brian to come forward. Whereas the Chicago Bears have been a valued part of the Lake Forest community for 45 years; and whereas, beginning in 1975, the Chicago Bears football operations were housed at Ferry Hall prior to moving to Halas Hall; and whereas, in 1979, the Bears founder, president, and coach, George Halas, dedicated the original Halas Hall at Lake Forest College, establishing Lake Forest as the longtime home of the Chicago Bears; and whereas, in 1997, the Chicago Bears moved to a 38-acre site in Lake Forest just north of the then-developing Conway Office Park; and whereas, under the leadership of the current principal owner of the Chicago Bears, Virginia Halas McCaskey, the daughter of founder George Halas, the Bears facility in Conway Park has been continually enhanced and today is one of the premier facilities among NFL teams; and whereas, the Chicago Bears' investment in the city of Lake Forest is significant and greatly appreciated; whereas, the Chicago Bears' organization embodies the very character of the city of Lake Forest with high-quality facilities, attention to detail, native landscaping, and respect for its own traditions and history, while at the same time looking forward, changing, adapting, and striving for excellence; and whereas, the city of Lake Forest takes great pride in the fact that the Chicago Bears call Lake Forest home; and now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the entire community, hereby expresses its sincere congratulations to the Chicago Bears on its 100th season, extends good wishes for the next 100 years, and offers a resounding "Go Bears!" And be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to the Chicago Bears on this 21st day of January 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Silence. Brian, would you like to step up? Say a few words?
First of all, thank you very much. This is a wonderful way to help us in our celebration of our 100 years. And you're doing it in such an honorable way, and we appreciate it. Since 1975, it's been a tremendous partnership with the community, with the city of Lake Forest, and with its residents. And we sincerely appreciate that relationship. In 1979, as you mentioned, we built Halas Hall. It was dedicated to my late uncle and George Halas's son, George Junior. Football being what it is, we quickly outgrew that facility. And it was also a partnership with Lake Forest College, as it was on their property. So, in that growth with the NFL and, of course, our organization, it's necessary to find some more space. We took our training camp to Platteville, Wisconsin in 1984. And we were there for 18 years. And came back to the state of Illinois and moved our training camp to Bourbon, Illinois. And we were there for another 18 years. In 1997, as you mentioned, we built the new Halas Hall. And we thought we'd really gone to heaven. We had a facility that was three times larger, had more practice space. And we thought, "Wow, this is tremendous." Well, we figured out, again, with growth, we quickly outgrew that space. And just recently, as you mentioned, we completed a very large expansion, not only to the facility itself, but adding two more football fields. And we do believe we have one of the finest facilities in the NFL at this time. And we're very proud of it. We're also very proud to bring training camp back to Lake Forest after 36 years being away, and want to say we're glad to be back home. And I know I speak loudly for our players, coaches, and staff who have lived in dorm rooms for 36 years. It'd be good to be home. For 45 years, many of our coaches, players, and staff have made their homes here in Lake Forest. And I know you know this. Excellent schools, excellent parks, great shopping opportunities. We appreciate all of the terrific amenities that this town has to offer. Personally, in 1975 was my first exposure when the Bears moved here to Lake Forest. And I was 15 years old, and I said, "Wow." And I said, "Wow," when I saw the beach, and I saw the theater, and I saw the downtown area. And I said, "Someday, I want to live here." And 35 short years later, I made my way to Lake Forest, Lake Bluff. I'm technically in Lake Bluff, right on the border on East Sheridan. But I promise you, we've been on a search, and we will find and succeed and get a home in Lake Forest.
There are great bargains right now.
We'll get there. But as our 100th season comes to a close, our future is bright. And the Bears remain proud to be a part of the Lake Forest community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your assortment. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next subject, I want to acknowledge a member of our city staff who was beyond instrumental in having all this happen. The planning for the new addition, the, the creation or certainly enhancement of all those nice things that Brian referred to in Lake Forest, and, and bringing training camp back here, and that's Kathy Cerniak, so thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a resolution celebrating the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. So I'll read the resolution, and then Lori, are you ready to come up and say a few words? Whereas on February 14, 1920, the League of Women Voters, the League, was formed at the Congress Hotel in Chicago, Illinois, and whereas the League was formed six months prior to, but in anticipation of the ratification of the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote in the United States, and whereas the League was a political experiment designed to help 20 million women carry out their new responsibilities as voters by educating them about issues, and whereas from the beginning, the League determined that it would be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing any particular political party or individual candidate, whereas the League continues today as a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government work, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy, and whereas today, the League is composed of members in over 700 local county and state leagues in all 50 states, plus the District of Columbia, the Virgin Islands, and Hong Kong, and whereas among those states, among those state leagues is the League of Women Voters of Illinois, which was incorporated on March 22, 1920, and in turn is composed of over 40 local leagues, and whereas the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff League of Women Voters was incorporated on June 9, 1925, whereas the League is a civic organization that has fought since 1920 to improve government and engage everyone in the decisions that impact their lives, and whereas the League will celebrate its 100th anniversary on February 14, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Forest hereby declares February 14, 2020, as a date to celebrate the League of Women Voters and its vision of a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Be it further resolved that the resolution, this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff League of Women Voters with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the January 21, 2020 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Lori, would you like to step up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council. The League of Women Voters has supported education, nonpartisan advocacy, and the enlightenment and involvement of women in civic and professional life for nearly 100 years in the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area. In a pre-internet age, when information was less accessible, women gathered in private homes in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff under the auspices of the League to discuss issues of the day. These discussions fostered development of local League community leaders such as Phyllis Albrecht and Virginia Frederick. Today, the League of Women Voters also provides women with leadership skills through training, seminars, and hands-on opportunities to manage issues and events throughout the country. These programs create leadership opportunities for women outside of the workforce and translate into marketable talent and the ability to lead local issue-based coalitions. Locally and in this very room, Melanie Rumel and Prue Bider are current League members. Julie Morrison and Susan Garrett and Sandra Hart are also members. Our members range in age from 16 to 92. Two of our current members are current high school students at Lake Forest High School. One of these students recently testified at a Board of Education meeting. The other recently appeared on a film series panel at Gorton. In support of its role of 100 years of effort in the personal and professional development of women and the passage of the 19th Amendment and establishment of the League of Women Voters, the League of Women Voters of the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff area is planning a celebratory centennial reception for all of the living Lake Forest and Lake Bluff women who have held elected and appointed office. We've been working on collating the list of these women for more than a year. More than 200 dedicated former and current public servants and elected officials have been invited to our Make a Difference reception at the Ferrari Dealer on April 2, 2020. This catered reception will include the reading of proclamations, as well as food and drink and a cappella entertainment. We hope that all of our hard-working and public officials will be able to join us for this unique celebration. And now I'd just like to take a moment to highlight some of the other centennial activities that you'll hear about in our community. There are things going on all over the country, but locally, January 25 and 26, in conjunction with the Lake Forest Library, we will have a, and February 2, a Suffragists Film Festival. We have a joint suffrage program with the Lake Forest History Center on March 12. April 2, as I mentioned, our reception. And then on May 30, we are partnering with the Lake Forest High School New Media Department for a student film festival honoring some of the same women that have served our community. We'll present the Know Your Government Awards on July 4, our usual participation in the July 4, Lake Bluff Parade. We hope to get 100 women in white, we'll see if we can do that. And also in August, the Lake Forest Day Parade. It's an exciting year for the League of Women Voters, and we're very grateful and thankful for your support and inspiration.
Okay, now the last announcement. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce the establishment of a city council committee on environmental sustainability. We are establishing this new city council committee to provide an ongoing and consistent focus to the city government's efforts to enhance our sustainability, the sustainability of all of our activities going forward. Although the city of Lake Forest was environmentally aware and proactive long before it was a widespread trend, it's important to me, and based on many conversations with residents over the past year, important to many of our community, that we as a city council step forward at this time to do even more to preserve and protect the environment for future generations of Lake Foresters. With the formation of a council committee specifically charged with considering the city's existing policies, as well as new policies as they relate to the environment, conservation, and sustainability, we will keep this topic at the forefront of our conversations. My intent is that the committee will identify initiatives that we can support as a community, as well as prompt conversations that help us all become more aware of how we can each play a role in making Lake Forest a little greener. I'm appointing Alderman Melanie Rumel as chairman of this new committee. Alderman Rumel has a passion for sustainability and a long association with Lake Forest Open Lands. I am also appointing Alderman Jim Preschlack and Alderman Jed Morris to serve on this committee. All three have established credentials in this area and have been a conscience for the council on an ongoing basis, and it was a pretty straightforward decision to choose those three, and especially Melanie as the chairman. Alderman Preschlack currently serves as the city's representative to the Lake Forest Collaborative for Environmental Leadership, a group comprised of representatives from various community organizations. The work of the collaborative has established a strong framework for the work of the new council committee. Alderman Preschlack will provide the important link between these two groups. Alderman Morris also is passionate about the environment, and he is the chairman of the city council's finance committee. He will bring the necessary balance to the discussions of the committee. The economic costs and benefits of policies and decisions must always be a consideration. I'm confident that Alderman Morris will assure that financial impacts are always given appropriate weight. I have no doubt about that.
No doubt.
I look forward to seeing the initiatives, policies, discussions, and debates brought forward from the Environmental Sustainability Committee. My thanks to Alderman Rumel, Alderman Morris, and Alderman Preschlack for your willingness to take on this additional responsibility. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I think you deserve a well-deserved break, you can take a sip of water, but, and a belated Happy New Years to everybody as well. First, under my report tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Kevin Considine, the president and CEO of Lake County Partners. Kevin's here tonight to provide an update to the city council and the community regarding the Metro Moore Express Train Project. As you may recall, this two-year reverse commute project, which began in March of last year, added additional rush hour express trains from Chicago out to Deerfield and to our Telegraph Road Station here in Lake Forest. The goal was to provide additional transportation options for workers who may reside in Chicago but work out here in Lake County, as well as to provide additional access for local residents to travel into Chicago. The project was funded through a remarkably successful public-private partnership involving local villages and major Lake County employers, including the city of Lake Forest, the villages of Bannock Burn and Deerfield, Lake County Government, Lake County Partners, ABV, Horizon Pharma, Trustmark Insurance, Tenneco, and Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital. And with the two-year pilot program approaching the one-year anniversary, its full, its first full year in operation, I thought tonight would be a good time for Kevin to provide an update on the early results. And so with that, happy to turn it over to you, Kevin.
Thank you, thank you, Jason, and an extra bonus, it's an honor to be here with you all tonight, and especially on the night that we're honoring former mayor Clark, who was instrumental in establishing the Telegraph Road Station in the first place, so really very cool. Jason did a great job of the tee-up, and importantly, the, one of the primary drivers here was actually the reverse commute, and the reverse commute has always been very important for Lake County. We have the largest number of reverse commuters than anywhere in the metro system, and many of you might be surprised to hear that for every four Lake County residents who hop on the train to go into the city in the morning, three come back the other way. So it's a big number, and it's really impactful, and it's supported by many of the corporate brands that you see up there, but because we have the infrastructure for it, and a lot of that is also, we have the corporate shuttles, so we have a culture of the companies helping to get their employees to and from for that, for that last mile. So we talked about it a little bit, and Jason sort of teed up the problem that we were addressing, and this is really, we say all the time, this is a talent issue masquerading as a transportation issue. Any company will say today their single largest challenge is talent, is finding, attracting, and retaining qualified talent. For our corporate users here in Lake County, that is predominantly their biggest challenge is how can they attract young professionals living downtown to work out here? That is mostly a transportation issue. And so the, the primary challenge was, all right, how can we make that easier, and what can we do to make that reverse commute easier? Frankly, this, the challenge started here in the city of Lake Forest. This is a, a topic that, that this body and the city's been working on for a while, and together about a year and a half ago, we started assembling the partners to do that. So that's the problem we're addressing, so the solution, as Jason identified, was establishing that reverse commute service. We talked about the partners who are there to help fund that. So what we, what we actually did, so here's a quick snapshot of the new trains. So there's a new reverse train, early morning express leaves downtown 6:25, makes a couple of stops, and then runs express starting in Lake Cook, and then Deerfield, and then Lake Forest. So, great way to get, to get out here to work early. And then you might remember that previous to this, there was no southbound service, again, from the West Lake Forest Station between 4:30 and 7:20 in the evening. So you could get to work, you just couldn't get home. So companies were having to bus people to Deerfield, or Highland Park, or kind of all over the place, which is an added cost, and then just, a lot of employees just wouldn't do it. Many of, of those companies also, when doing exit interviews with people who live downtown and decide to leave the company, no surprise, the number-one stated reason for leaving the company is the commute. So we've taken a really big swing at closing that gap, so adding two new expresses in the evening, you see that's, so 5:09 and 5:35. So you can realistically, depending on where you work and where you live, you can leave your desk, you know, pretty close to 5 o'clock and get home by 6 or 6:30. That's a pretty good deal. Frankly, if you lived in Logan Square and worked in the Loop, you couldn't do that. So we're really excited about this, and the, the early returns have been really solid. So remember, this is a two-year pilot, and the theory there was, let's spend thousands of dollars to prove out the demand before we spend millions on a, on a small little capital project. So that was, we, in order to make this service self-sustaining, we need essentially 300 incremental daily riders. Not everybody rides every day, so in order to get 300 a day, you know, that's probably something like, you know, 1,000 people. We said, "You know what, it's going to, consumer behavior changes slowly, so we're going to take, give ourselves two years to get there." However, as you see there, so after, this is just the data after the first six months, three of the first six months were well over that goal, and one of them was pretty darn close. So we're really excited about the, the early trend of this ridership, and importantly, that's bucking the trend of the metro system as a whole. System-wide, traffic is, is down, but so this is, and this is on two lines, so this, looking at the traffic, this is, they're looking at both Milwaukee North and UPN here, and both are up, unlike the rest of the system, so that's a great sign. And we're looking at both lines because we're expecting some people to switch, who are maybe using UPN today, will switch to the new trains. And Metro has also found that frankly, just through promoting and talking about train ridership, kind of sort of the rising tide lifts all boats, so they, they see ridership gain in multiple areas. So we're really excited about the gains. We also want to be cautious. The train ridership is highly cyclical, so we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. It's possible that we've just tracked the right six months, but we're optimistic about where it is, and frankly, that early morning express, I don't think it's really found its people yet. We'd really like to run it earlier, but we run into the constraints of the freight window, so we're trying to negotiate that out with, with the freight companies to be able to move that. Ideally, we think, like in UPN, that's a, that's a 5 o'clock or 5:15 departure from downtown, so we'd like to do that same thing. So it's a pilot, we'll keep testing stuff, we're doing, I think Metro's doing a good job of measuring what works, what doesn't, and, and how we tweak that going forward. We'll get the Q4 data in another, in another couple weeks. And then quickly, where we go from here, we're, we're doubling down on the marketing, so that's making the rounds of the, of our employers here, whether that's staffing a table in the cafeteria, you know, kind of going old-school. Importantly, making sure that the recruiters in their HR departments are teed up on this so that they can use it as a recruiting tool to help attract those folks who might have said no today. Early, that's going to be a really tough one to get data on, but anecdotally, we've heard really good things from several of the companies. Interestingly, from some of the companies who said no from financially participating are saying, "Hey, this is great." They'll get a subsequent call, for sure. And then also using social media as well, we're trying to, Metro's, we're trying to figure out how do we reach those, the folks living downtown to inform them of the great job opportunities up here? So that's the next, the next trick to be figured out this year. I thought I'd keep it short, unless anybody wants to really... I thought I'd keep it short, unless anybody wants to really go longer, but I'd be happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
First of all, speaking on behalf of every commuter coming in and out of the city, and also being very familiar with the West Line, and having clients who have, wrestling with these employment issues themselves, you are speaking my language, that this is a phenomenal opportunity for the city to find new ways to attract businesses up here, and that's going to be driven by attracting the employees here. My question to you is, on the assumption that your trends will continue on the positive rate of growth that you're seeing, is there discussion that more can be done? That adding another train, or faster trains with fewer stops? Again, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I want to make sure that Metro's not looking at this as, this is all that's needed, but more can be done.
Yeah, no, great point, and thank you for that. And admittedly, Metro is really pushing hard. And Metro Board Chair, the Board Chair is actually a Lake Forest resident, Norm Carlson, and he feels very strongly, there's a lot more that they'd like to do. I won't take us into the weeds of all the constraints on that. Two tracks, it's really hard to manage the traffic. They've got some pockets of things they'd like to tweak. Frankly, a lot of that comes to figuring out where you don't have to stop. It's hard to take something away, so, but we're trying to identify those spots. Those corporate employers are pushing very hard for some of these same improvements than here on the UPN. So that's, those messages are not lost. But, yeah, the employers are actually pushing pretty hard on this, which is great.
Great talk, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have another comment. I mean, there's also the issue of getting Lake Forest people into the city at a faster rate. And, you know, anything we can do to add that, and even on this, the other line, would be certainly helpful. You know, I was actually talking to Norm Carlson, I said, I swear that when I was working in the city, there were express trains from the East Lake Forest Train Station, and he said, yeah, you're right, but we lost that track, I guess, was, so, I don't know how that's going to come back. But, boy, what a difference that would make, too, for our housing stock and everything else.
It would be great. And I appreciate you bringing that up, because I did sort of gloss over it, since the focus was really the reverse commute, but, you know, the train coming up has to go back down. So we have picked up some other service. There's now a really good express set, leaves Telegraph Road at 7:48, lands about 8:32 or something in the morning. That's a great train. And then, frankly, for heading down in the evening and catching a game, that 5:09 train out of West Lake Forest, landing at Union Station just before 6:00, is terrific. And it's actually, it's, people are starting to find it.
That's good. Otherwise, you go to Highland Park.
Exactly.
Where they have a crossover switch.
Exactly. There is a crossover just above Highland Park, and that's ultimately what we'll put on the, here in Lake Forest.
I would just add, I'm in a couple of professional organizations in the city, in downtown, that have members up here. And I don't know if you're aware of it, or if Metro is either, but many of those professional members take that new later train south. That's exactly what they're looking for. They couldn't make a 6:30 dinner before. They wouldn't even try. But now they can make 6:30 dinner in the Loop, and then take a later train back home. So, you've got the reverse commute going, but you've also got a different population that lives up here, wants to have dinner in the Loop and come back. So, it's really great. It's really great. I've heard good things.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I'd just like to add my two cents to, these people that are commuting here from other places to work, whether it's by car, by train, they're our best prospects for becoming new residents, especially the younger ones who are starting to think that having two kids in an apartment in downtown Chicago isn't such a great thing. And we're seeing it, but this is certainly going to help, and it's, you know, to the extent that it helps our employers attract and retain these people, and they're here more and more of their time. They probably spend more time here than they spend at home, if I'm any indication. So, hopefully, getting closer to home will be an attraction for them, and that's a side benefit, you know, a significant benefit to the community. So thank you for all your hard work on this. This is a great pilot, and we are holding our fingers crossed that the numbers will get to where they need to go, and we can make this permanent.
Great. Thank you. And for the next one, I'll have a better stat, but the office vacancy in buildings that are tied within shuttle routes of the train stations materially lower than buildings that are outside of that reach, so.
Good point.
Well positioned here.
Whatever we can do to help, Kevin.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. And then, one last informational update for the council and the community before I turn it back over. Some of you may be aware that the former Pascuazi Garden Center building was recently demolished, and there is some site clearing that is going on. The new owner, Mr. Ayasu, is currently working on plans for redevelopment of the site, most likely with an office building and some small-scale retail. At this point, the city has not received any redevelopment plans for the site, although we do anticipate receiving plans probably in the next three to six months or so, and at which point, there will certainly subsequently be public hearings before the plan commission. But, this property located at the southeast corner of Everett and Waukegan has obviously been of some interest historically to the council and the community, and so I just thought this would be a good opportunity to make sure everyone is aware that there is some progress and momentum over there. I would say, in addition, that I understand the owner of the property intends to have some early informal discussions with the closest neighbors who may be impacted, and so we really appreciate that additional effort. And so hopefully, more to come in the months ahead. There are no questions? Then that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. The first item is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which I will turn over to Finance Chair Jed Morris.
Very good. Right. So this is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. It comes to us from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the National Association of Cities and Towns and Financial Officers. This is our fourth consecutive year of receiving this recognition. It's a significant accomplishment for city government. It's difficult to achieve this. In the past, only 1.8% of the 89,000 units of government are awarded this Budget Presentation Award. So it's pretty dramatic, and it goes to the competence of our IT staff, I mean, our Finance and IT Director and her staff, who put this budget together year in and year out, and we're now in our fourth consecutive award. So I'm pleased to present this award to Elizabeth Hollab, Director of Finance and IT, for her efforts in coordinating the preparation of our annual budget and the results thereof.
Next item on the agenda is approval of ordinances abating the 2019 tax levies for various general obligation alternate revenue bond issues. This is first reading, and it'll be presented by Elizabeth Hollab.
Thank you, Mayor Panda Leon. These items would typically come to you in November and December as part of the tax levy discussions. However, we held off on this because of the pending and now completed bond refunding. So, this chart kind of encapsulates what we're doing this evening pretty well. The city traditionally issues all of its debt as general obligation debt, pledging the city's full faith and credit, and taxing authority, in an effort to achieve the lowest interest rate possible. For example, if we issued revenue bonds, there would be a reserve requirement and probably a higher interest rate on that because the taxing authority is not pledged. What the city then does is each year abate the tax levy for the portion of the bond amounts that are funded from other non-tax levy purposes. So this chart just shows the current outstanding issues on the left. The total debt service requirement for fiscal year '21, both bond principal and interest by issue. And then, walks through the alternate revenue sources that are used to fund a portion or all of the debt service on those individual issues. So you can see that total debt service requirements next year are 5.2 million. However, there are alternative revenue sources bringing that bond net levy down to 1.8 million. So what is before you this evening are four abatement ordinances reducing the amount to be levied by the county clerk associated with the 2011A, 2015, 2017, and 2019 issues. This evening is first reading, and we'll bring it back on February 3rd for final approval. And just to recap, we did, of course, issue a number of significant $17.665 million in refunding bonds. Thank you, Mayor Panda Leon, who mentioned this during the Finance Committee meeting. We did go to bond auction on December 4th and closed on the issue December 19th. This chart just shows the actual debt service savings of the refunding issue by the source of payment. So, the bonds that are funded from the Home Rule Sales Tax, Water Revenues, Golf Revenues, and the debt levy are shown with the savings by fiscal year. So, as the mayor mentioned, overall, total debt service reduction of 1.3 million over the life of the refunding bond, so very successful sale. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the abatement ordinances.
Okay. Next, we would entertain any comments from the public about these ordinances? There being none, I would bring this back for a roll-call vote.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion. Thanks, Jed.
Alderman Moreno seconded. Alderman Morris moved.
Thank you. Alderman Idler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the council about any There being none? Time for me to read. Next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. We have 18 of them tonight, so everybody's going to have to bear with me here for a moment. The reason we have 18 is because, there's really two reasons. One is, we are a bit backed up because we haven't had a meeting since the beginning of December, so there are a number of things that just need to be moved along. And the bigger reason is, there are a number of rather routine replacement of capital items. Each one has to be approved separately. Most of them are being purchased via a joint bid process, where we join together with other communities, make bulk bids, and this process has very specific deadlines that have to be met. But they are all bid out at the regional level, and then, so we get not only the benefit of, we get the benefit of the scale, but then we also have the processing of this process that has to happen. So, I would guess half of the omnibus items fall into that category. First item is approval of the December 2nd, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Second item is approval of the check register for the period of November 23rd to December 27th, 2019. Third item is approval of GIS Consortium Service Provider Contract to MGP Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $208,992 for calendar year 2020. Fourth item is approval to amend the City of Lake Forest Pay Plan to create an executive job classification for a Director of Innovation and Technology and authorize compensation for the remainder of fiscal year '20. Fifth item is approval to purchase a replacement cord data switch, installation services, and maintenance with Sentinel Technologies in the amount of $95,258. Sixth item is approval to purchase three replacement marked police vehicles included in the fiscal year 2021 capital equipment budget to the suburban purchasing cooperative's low bidder, Curry Motors, in the amount of $104,430. Seventh item is approval to purchase a cabinet body to install on a street section vehicle from PB Loader Corporation in the amount of $36,230, included in the fiscal year '21 capital equipment budget. Eighth item is an award of bids for the replacement of four refuse scooters for the sanitation section to Nielsen Enterprises in the amount of $62,080, and Burris Equipment in the amount of $26,078, included in the fiscal year 2021 capital equipment budget. Ninth item is approval to purchase a chipper body for the forestry section from PB Loader Corporation in the amount of $27,897, included in the fiscal year '21 capital equipment budget. Tenth item is approval to purchase two replacement SandPro rakes for the park section to Rinders Inc. in the amount of $39,846, included in the fiscal year '21 capital equipment budget. Eleventh item is approval to purchase a replacement four-wheel-drive utility cart for the park section to Rinders Inc. in the amount of $28,072, included in the fiscal year 2021 capital equipment budget. The twelfth item is approval to purchase a replacement Groundmaster mower for the park section to Rinders Inc. in the amount of $47,911, included in the fiscal year 2021 capital budget. Thirteenth item is approval to purchase two replacement hooklifts, two dump bodies, and a V-Box salt spreader for two water and sewer vehicles from the PB Loader Corporation in the amount of $118,505, which was included in the fiscal year 2021 capital equipment budget. Fourteenth item is approval to purchase a replacement Bobcat 5600 utility work machine for the cemetery section from Atlas Bobcat in the amount of $54,445, included in the fiscal year 2021 capital equipment budget. Fifteenth item is approval to purchase a replacement Groundmaster mower for the golf course section to Rinders Inc. in the amount of $29,351, included in the fiscal year 2021 capital equipment budget. Sixteenth item is approval of an inflow and infiltration policy. Seventeenth item is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. And the eighteenth is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, also first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Are there any items on this lengthy list that any member of the city council would like to remove or have taken separately?
I'd love to make a comment, but I have no intention of suggesting the removal or doing it separately. Is that okay?
No, you can make a comment.
Okay. This is on approval of an inflow and infiltration policy, and a staff contact here is Jim Lockafier, who I don't think is here tonight, but, oh, he is here tonight! Jim, maybe you came in and I didn't see you. No, you don't have to go up. I'm just going to compliment you. I mean, you can come up. So, I'm now in my sixth year as an alderman. This is the best write-up explaining our sewers, and our storm, and our sanitation sewers, and what happens when there's too much water. And there's more detail later on, which is, you know, if you want more detail, but this is the best and most concise explanation of something which I think sometimes has people's eyes glazed over, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm so glad you're here. I knew there were people who would tell you that I said thank you, but I'm just delighted that you're here. Well done. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? President Rommel?
I just wanted, again, I don't want to take this out of the agenda, but I wonder if this might be an opportunity to expand a little bit about item number four, which if this might be an opportunity to expand a little bit about item number four, which is the creation of an executive job classification for Director of Innovation and Technology.
Sure, I'd be happy to. As I think indicated in the write-up, the reason for the recommendation is simply, I think, a reflection of the changing role that information technology departments are playing in municipal organizations and recognizing the opportunities that we have to further integrate utilization of technology and data to drive decision-making and resource allocation. It was, you know, my assessment that some additional resources were necessary in order to enhance our capacity in that area, but I remain very confident that the recommendation, if approved, will be tremendously beneficial in ensuring not only, again, further efficiencies in our operations, but also in finding significant opportunities for enhanced customer service in the community, which is really critical. And so, again, I think it's just a reflection of the changing role that technology is playing in municipal operations, and I look forward to seeing where it will take us as an organization in the months and years ahead.
Alderman Bushman?
I have a question concerning item five, which relates to a contract with Sentinel for course switch hardware and maintenance. And maybe Joe, if I could ask Joe these questions, because it appears that we did only get one bidder in putting it out for a competitive bid, and I just wanted to confirm that not having any other competitors to compare them to, you're comfortable with the references, the capability, and the pricing that we are being offered by this single bidder?
No, that is correct. They met all requirements to the RFP. They were competitive in pricing in comparison, and they satisfied all.
It actually came in under budget, too, if that means anything. It's always good to see.
When we developed the budget, we did take a look at the market at that time, and that's what we based it off of, and that came significantly.
Although, does it raise a question as to whether we use the right resources to solicit bids? If we only, did seem to only get one that was interested in giving the city bid, or is there another explanation?
So, no, I did ask others, because we did present it to other vendors that this RFP was out, and we encouraged people to respond to it. It was on IllinoisBid.com as well.
Oh, I saw Pioneer Press, but I was wondering whether we brought it.
Pioneer Press, yeah, Pioneer Press does offer that when they will put it out in the paper, but then we also ensure that it does go out on those little bid areas as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Byler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Thank you, everyone, for listening to my lengthy dissertation, or whatever, whatever it was called. Next item on the agenda is consideration, this is ordinances, consideration to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 110 entitled "Licenses and Miscellaneous" related to raffles to bring these sections into alignment with recent state of Illinois legislation. First reading, and if approved, final approval. That's going to be presented by City Attorney Julie Tapador.
Good evening. We've seen a lot of statutes, new statutes and amendments to statutes over the last year that have dealt with expansion of gaming. So, the racetrack, the casinos, the video gaming has been expanded. This was part of that push. One of them was to amend the Raffles and Poker Runs Act. That's the state statute that governs raffles. So, it came probably only a year after other changes to the Raffles Act, so we had been amending ordinances twice in the last two years to deal with these state changes. So, the city does have a raffles ordinance. It's part of the city code. The city allows and licenses raffles pursuant to state statute, but there were a number of changes that we needed to incorporate into the city code to be consistent with the new statute. And I'll just, in your packet is a red line showing the changes, so you can see, but I'll just run through some of the more substantive changes. There were some changes to the type of organizations that can operate a raffle to include law enforcement agencies, to include some civic and business organizations, like a Chamber of Commerce, that were not permitted to operate raffles before. Now, the state statute allows, instead of having to apply for a raffle for every single raffle, you can apply for one consolidated raffle, so submit one application if you're going to do one raffle a month, so you don't have to keep coming back every month. That's now allowed. It modified the eligibility for a license. Still require, the ordinance would still require that you had your location in Lake Forest. We can only license raffles within the city, so the organization, but not residency. So, it would, maybe if a business were here, an organization were here. State statute and the local ordinance will allow the sale of chances throughout the state. So, it used to be if you were running a raffle and you had the raffle tickets, that you could only sell them if you were licensed in Lake Forest when you were in Lake Forest. So, to sell the chances. Now, you can sell the chances throughout the state, which makes a lot of sense. I think people were probably doing it anyway, but. The management of raffles, you can hire, the organization can hire a third party to manage and operate the raffles. The application is still by the organization, so you still have to meet all of the requirements to be licensed, but you can have a third party help you manage it and organize it. The ordinance will allow someone to request a waiver of the bond requirement, but that waiver has to come to the City Council. So, if an organization wanted to waive that requirement, that they be bonded, that they provide the city with a bond, that would come here. So, the City Council would have to approve that. I think that covers all of the changes. Nothing different than what state statute has required and is now in place, so we would recommend approval to be consistent with the state statute.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Alderman Morris?
Can we make this a final vote? So, this is the first reading and final approval?
That's what's proposed.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
I would move to.
We have public comment first.
Sorry, sorry.
Any member of the public would like to comment on changes to the raffle ordinance? There being none?
Now, can I do my thing?
You know what, let me read the motion here.
All right. Got it right. Just so impatient.
This would be approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 110 titled "Licenses and Miscellaneous" related to raffles to bring these sections into alignment with the recent state of Illinois legislation. First reading and final approval.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got two seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Byler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Next item is consideration to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 110 titled "Licenses and Miscellaneous" related to landscape licenses to bring these sections into alignment with current practices. First reading and, if appropriate, final approval. Also presented by City Attorney Julie Tapador.
Not quite as exciting as raffles, but this is another one of those cleanup ordinances. Biddy and I have been talking about the landscape licensing and the processing and the application, and also the monitoring of the landscape folks that are licensed by the city. And one of the things that we had determined in how we're administering it is that at the time of application, the landscape contractor, the licensee, has to provide evidence and proof of insurance. So, we have a requirement that they be insured. We also, at the time of renewal or expiration, staff sends out notices and make sure that the insurance is still good. But the code itself had an obligation that, and, you know, legal obligation, that proof of insurance be reviewed by the city manager from time to time. It wasn't clear what that meant. Did it mean every day, once a month? As lawyers, we really prefer to have the right, but not the obligation, to do that, and we have a good practice in place at the city to make sure that we are checking, but we don't want to have the obligation and potential legal risk that it wasn't checked one day and that's when something happened. So, it's a pretty minor change, just to state instead of mandating that it be reviewed, that the city manager has the right, but not the obligation, to require evidence and proof of insurance at any time. So, that's our recommendation, is that we do that cleanup, be consistent with the current practice, and also lower the legal risk if there is an issue.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Alderman Notes?
How is this enforced? There's a yard crew out working, and a police officer is stopping and asking for a copy of a license.
Yeah, that, I'll leave it to you on the enforcement.
Enforcement is actually handled through the police department. Landscapers are required to, we actually print them a license that they keep in the glove box, and when asked, that's proof. It's also enforced. We actually provide a list of licensed landscapers that the police department can also take a look at.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Would anybody from the public like to comment on this proposal?
Actually, can I ask one more question on that?
Wait a second.
I see.
What if you've got a teenage kid down the street mowing a lawn? Are they, is there any exemption to something like this?
They don't do that anymore.
Well, they don't. Just like.
Kevin, can we have his name?
No, it's a good question. So, the officers who work day shift are the ones who deal with this most of the time. There is a list that they have available to them, and they tend to work day shift for many years, so they become used to those companies that are licensed. Occasionally, they'll stop to check a truck, especially if it's a truck that's unlabeled. They're required to be labeled, but occasionally they have to use a spare truck or a rented truck, so they'll stop and get out and check. We do occasionally get calls from residents as well. They're generally not going to check a teenager mowing a lawn, because he probably doesn't have a truck with him or any other equipment other than the mower, and generally, our residents won't call on a teenager mowing the lawn across the street.
On the rare occasion that there actually is a teenager cutting the grass.
There are some.
It's a good business opportunity for young residents. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Would you like to please step up and introduce yourself, if you don't mind, again?
Hi, good evening, Lori Rose. A couple of years ago, some of my neighbors had a tree removal service, and they recommended that I use it, and I asked the service, "Do you have insurance?", and they said, "Oh, yeah." And I just, there was something about it that was sort of sketchy, so I called up to City Hall and found out that they had had a license, but it expired. So, I guess my comment would be, if it's not already in existence, is there a way to put this online so the resident could quickly check a landscaping license without bothering the community development or the police department or something like that? I think it'd be a great resource, and then you could publicize it, so.
That's a great idea.
Not an idea at all.
In our land of new technologies.
There it's a good example.
There actually is a licensed landscape list that is provided online, that's updated once a week during the height of the season, and has, there's 400-plus licensees, and so, you know, we update it as often as we can, and it's a calendar year license, and so, right now, we're just ramping into issuing those. So, residents can find those licensed landscapers on the city's website.
On the website?
Yep.
Will hopefully make it easier to find.
Yeah.
Grabbs on a new website, but.
It's good. I love it.
Thank you. Any other comments now from the council? Okay, I would welcome a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 110 titled "Licenses and Miscellaneous" related to landscape licenses to bring these sections into alignment with current practices. First reading and, if appropriate, I believe appropriate, final approval.
Ted make the motion.
This is your, great, never mind.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No, you made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion. I'll second.
I didn't realize I had, but okay.
If you don't want to, you don't have to.
Vote twice, don't you?
Roll in often.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Byler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next two items on the agenda are old business and new business. Is there any old business or new business? Alderman Notes?
An old business item. Michael Thomas, what is the update on our intra-governmental agreement with the state and plowing 60 and Wakegan Road? And how did that work on Saturday?
There's softball.
I think it works really well, from what I hear.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable members of the City Council. The IDOT agreement has been signed, has been returned. We have officially invoiced the state for 50% per the agreement. Interesting, we had a phone call last week. The comptroller denied the initial payment. I have to say this with a straight face.
Just saying, it's okay.
They couldn't read the signature on the agreement from the city.
My handwriting was so bad, they denied it.
Who's to blame for that?
So, they required that the agreement have the printed name with the title of the position. So, once that was made, then that was sent back to the state, and we'll be receiving the payment soon. As far as the progress, so far, so good. The storm we had over the weekend, Friday night, was a little challenging in rush hour, but after that, things went very well. So, we got everything opened up, and by 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning, I think we were in pretty good shape, so.
Thank you.
There's a picture on the Facebook page that was taken from one of the snowplows at the intersection of Route 60 and 43 at some time around daybreak on Saturday morning, and it is absolutely clear, not a sign of ice or snow anywhere.
Right.
So, well done. Any additional items for discussion or comments by City Council members? There being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.